Okay, well, welcome everybody to the Town of Grand Falls Windsor Council Meeting Number Five Seventy-Five. Before I bring the meeting to order tonight, we do have one proclamation to read into the record. It's for World Lymphedema Day, March the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas lymphedema is a chronic and debilitating disease characterized by an accumulation of lymphatic fluid that causes swelling of the arms, legs, or other areas of the body, and which can cause disfigurement, discomfort, pain, and distress, and impair quality of life. Whereas patients with lymphedema may struggle with pain and swelling, may have recurring severe infection caused by lymphedema, and may experience financial and psychological strains due to the difficulties of managing their disease. Whereas while there are cases of primary lymphedema that are inherited, most cases are secondary that developed as a result of trauma, infection, surgery, radiation therapy, or removal of lymph nodes, including cancer treatment. Whereas gaps in research, education, and effective treatments exist, and more knowledge about lymphedema is needed to achieve timely diagnosis, management, and care, and develop more effective treatments. Whereas lymphedema is estimated to affect two point eight percent of the population, or fourteen thousand eight hundred people in the province of Newfoundland-Labrador. Whereas Lymphedema Association of Newfoundland-Labrador is a registered charity dedicated to ensuring all lymphedema patients have access to information, support, and treatment, thereby promoting healthy and hopeful living with lymphedema. Whereas March the sixth of each year is internationally recognized as World Lymphedema Day to raise awareness about the disease and the treatment options that are available. Therefore, I, Barry Manuel, Mayor of Town of Grand Falls Windsor, do hereby proclaim March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three to be observed as World Lymphedema Day in Grand Falls Windsor. So, get that one to you, sir. Okay, with that, I'll call the meeting to order. You may notice some differences. You probably haven't got a shot of the entire council yet, but Councillor Dwyer is ill and unable to make it this evening. And we've got Mr. Goss, our CFO, who's sitting next to us. Mr. Finn is on annual leave this week. So with that, the minutes from the last meeting will be carried over to next meeting. There's some staffing issues, I understand, with people being off, and that caused them not to get put together totally. So we'll adopt both sets at next meeting, and we'll go ahead now and get into the regular order of business. And that will start with the dispersment report, and I'm going to ask Councillor Noel to do that in Councillor Dwyer's absence.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the dispersment report dated March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of six hundred eleven thousand eight hundred nine dollars and sixty-one cents be adopted as presented.
Okay, it's been moved by Councillor Noel, seconded by Councillor Cody. Any discussion, comment, and a dispersment report? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can't remind it? Motion carried. Okay, next up is committee reports. First is community services. Councillor, or my apologies, Deputy Mayor Brown, going way back.
Thank you, Mayor Manuel. Community Services Committee met five P M. Tuesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Those in attendance were myself, Mr. Chair, Councillor Holly Dwyer, Councillor Andrew Little, Mayor Barry Manuel, Councillor Amy Cody, Councillor Bob Hiscock, Councillor Dave Noel. Staff in attendance, Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Robin Haniford, our Communications Officer, and Todd Mercer, Director of Community Services. First order of business was our Business Economic Development Officer joining the committee meeting at five P M. The committee discussed the concept of establishing an adult care program in Grand Falls Windsor in partnership with Central Health, and staff have been engaged with a focus group interested in developing this program. The committee recommends that staff continue to work on this initiative and report back to the committee if other resources are required. STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. The committee discussed the new STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Program that is set to be delivered in Grand Falls Windsor. This program delivers education on health, cybersecurity, and robotics to two K to twelve students and is an extracurricular program. The first event will take place on April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth with a focus group on cybersecurity. Forty students from Exploits Valley High and Exploits Valley Intermediate are expected to attend and learn about hacking, threats, and I T. system defense. The event is funded by the Town of Grand Falls Windsor and Tech N. L. The Business Economic Development Officer was excused from the meeting at five forty P M. Correspondence about the Municipal Memorial Recognition Program. The committee reviewed correspondence from a resident interested in planting a tree in memory of her mother. The committee recommends that the director follow up with the resident and request she complete the necessary forms for the municipal memorial program. The committee further discussed that the municipal memorial program and recommends that an option of fruit-bearing trees be included, and that the directors of Community Services and Public Works and Development work on identifying or mapping strategic areas in town where trees will be planted. Ice-dividing equipment for minor hockey. The committee discussed the need to purchase an ice-surface dividing wall system for the Joe Byrne Memorial Stadium. The committee recommended that Director of Community Services work with the Minor Hockey Association to find grant opportunities to help offset the cost of these dividers. Correspondence about the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Joe Byrne Memorial Stadium. The committee discussed a request from Brian Blackmore about the seventy-fifth anniversary celebrations of the Joe Byrne Memorial Stadium. The committee recommended that the council subcommittee meet in the next few weeks and review the correspondence and report back at a future time. Chamber of Commerce. The committee discussed an upcoming Chamber of Commerce event on March thirtieth featuring keynote speaker Ed Moriarty. Mr. Moriarty is the Executive Director of Mining N. L. The committee recommends that the town assist in promoting the event on the town's Facebook Cantus Silva Correspondence. The committee discussed a community grant request from Cantus Silva. The committee recommends that the director work with the group and help them with purchasing the music sheets for the upcoming year to a maximum grant of five hundred dollars. Perfectly Centered A T. V. U. T. V. Poutine Festival. The committee discussed a proposed date and package details for the A T. V. U. T. U. T. V. Poutine Festival. The committee recommends that the Community Services Department move forward with the planning for this event on June second and third and start working with sponsors. Other Business. The director informed the committee that the full two thousand and twenty-three special events listing should be completed in the coming weeks with dates and time proposed for each event and will be presented at the next Community Services Committee meeting. The committee had some discussion about the Special Olympics Provincial Winter Games Weekend Events that just concluded. Council received many positive comments from the organizing committee and the public about the tremendous level of support and effort shown by town staff to ensure events were successful. Counselors also received similar praise about the dozens of volunteers and the organizing committee members themselves. The committee recommends that the Community Services Department work with the organizing committee to have a thank you appreciation night for the organizers, coaches, and volunteers. April fifth and sixth were the suggested dates the committee should consider when planning for this event. The committee discussed the availability of a town promotional item, sorry, and the importance of ensuring that plenty of stock was available for two thousand and twenty-three activities and events. The director will view the stock on hand and make recommendations at the next Community Services Committee meeting. The committee also discussed the two vacancies on the Excite Board of Directors. The committee recommends that Susan Kelly from Tech N. L. and Dr. Dez Whalen be appointed to the board. The director informed the committee that work on the two thousand and twenty-three Exploits Valley Salmon Festival is underway, and that bands, events, and sponsorship will be organized over the next month. A list of events and bands will be presented to the committee soon. The meeting is adjourned at eight fifteen P M., and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Brown, seconded by Councillor Little. Any discussion or comment on the Community Services Minutes? Councillor Hiscock.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. What regards to the perfectly centered A T. V. U. T. V. Poutine Festival coming up? The one we had in action was an absolutely great success, and I know this year with the organizing committee and the direction of our director, Mr. Todd Mercer, is going to be better again. So we're just telling people, there's a lot of activities coming up. Keep a watch on our Facebook page, and all the dates will be coming up soon. But this is going to be another great event for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, lots to go and lots to do, for sure. It'll be a busy schedule, and people go crazy for poutine. Wish we found out when tickets went in fifteen minutes or something last year. I think there was four hundred tickets gone. So, get your tickets early when they do go on sale. Any other comments on the Community Services Minutes? Deputy Mayor.
A few words about the proposed Adult Daycare Center for Grand Falls Windsor. And the idea is that for people who are looking out to their parents who are older, or looking out to people who can't look after themselves, the Adult Daycare Center, the idea behind it is that if the caregiver got to go shopping, or got to go for a few hours, he'd be able to drop his mom and dad off at this center, and the staff there would care for the individual for a couple of hours when, as I said, the caregiver got a break. I think it's the second time around for this. I think we mentioned we tried to put this off the ground, but COVID stopped us at that point in time. I think it would be certainly a beneficial program for the people of Grand Falls Windsor, and our hope is that their Business Development Officer, Mr. Singh, can take this to the next level fairly quickly and get this center up and running in Grand Falls Windsor. I think it'd be a definite benefit to the town. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, no, the Adult Care Center is something that we've been working on for a while. As you said, I think everybody knows of several people probably who could avail of that when you're dealing with aging family members, friends, et cetera, and with illnesses, particularly dementia, amongst other things. So it's good to be able to give them some relief, and we hope that we'll be here very soon. Any other comments or discussion on the Community Services Minutes? Okay, hearing done. I've got a couple of quick things there. Just a note on Special Olympics, I guess. We did have a very successful Special Olympics, as everybody knows. I think there was some two hundred and fifty athletes and another hundred and fifty coaches and managers, et cetera. Just want to say hats off to the organizing committee. Of course, Deputy Mayor Brown was the chairperson for that committee, and everybody else that served on that committee, which there were many, I won't try to name. But again, you know, when it comes to the Special Olympics, it seems like the volunteerism has taken up a notch, and we saw people coming out and really in droves. And it was a lot of organization that had to be undertaken, whether it be the competitions themselves, or, you know, providing meals and snacks to the athletes, or, you know, the medal presentations, the transportation, all those things. So, great job by everybody, and of course, our staff as well, who were fantastic. And I know staff spent a lot of time getting facilities ready, and we're always there at the drop of a hat if anything was needed. And congratulations to all our athletes. You know, it was a great opening ceremonies, and I know some of our athletes, which, you know, Special Olympics is always great because really it doesn't matter who wins or loses. Everybody is into the spirit of it and happy for everybody else. But I have to point out that Liam Gibbons, who's a bowler, and most people may know Liam, he works at Dominion as well. Liam, and this is not uncommon for him, the funny part is, but he bowled a three fifty-seven on the Saturday morning of that competition in five-pin bowling. And anybody knows about five-pin bowling, that's darn near a perfect game. So he had lots of strikes, and he bowled what's called a nine hundred triple. So his other two games, he was over nine hundred, and that's the second time he's done that this year. So congratulations to Liam, and I know all the other athletes as well, and everybody that came in from out of town. It was definitely a pleasure to be a part of it. And Salmon Festival, yeah, not much, well, we do have some news to give, but we're not going to say much about it right now. We'll save that for another little while when we can get all the details together. But planning is well underway, and we're very excited about the fact that we're going to have another great community festival, one that'll have something for all ages and abilities, and for people to want to come into our town to enjoy with us, and hopefully get some of our expats home for, at least for a holiday, which we usually see around Salmon Festival time. I think it's July the eighteenth, is it?
Fourteenth.
Right, eighteenth is Grand Falls Windsor Day.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay, yeah, so that weekend. And we'll have more on that within the next couple of weeks, and have some announcements. I think people are going to be very pleased with the talent that's available and that everybody will be able to take part. With that, last chance for Community Services. Deputy Mayor, yeah?
Just more respect in a minute. My name was left after meeting which I did attend, so if Mr. Goss can correct that in the minutes, that would be muchly appreciated.
Yeah, good catch. We'll make sure that gets fixed. Okay, so we've got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can't remind it? Motion carried. Next up is Public Works and Development. Councillor Cody, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works and Development met on Wednesday, March fifteenth at five P M. In attendance, myself as the chairperson, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Councillor Bob Hiscock, Mayor Barry Manuel, Councillor Dave Noel, Councillor Holly Dwyer, Councillor Andrew Little, staff, Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, and Robin Haniford, Communications Officer. Malloy Street. The committee reviewed a cost estimate to complete one hundred meters of paving on Malloy Street. This was completed as a follow-up from a meeting with the developer of Amber Estates. The developer requested council complete the first section of paving as it is on existing town road reservation. The committee recommends further consultation with the developer on the proposed next steps in the subdivision and bring back to the committee for discussion. Variance Notice for Sixty-four Memorial Avenue. The committee reviewed a request from the resident at Sixty-four Memorial Avenue for a variance on the setback distance from a principal building to an accessory building to facilitate new building construction. A notice was mailed to adjacent property owners, and no objections or concerns were received. The committee recommends that this be approved. Crown Land Request Fifteen Shepherd Street. The committee received a request from the resident at Fifteen Shepherd Street for three hundred and twenty-five square meters of backland. This request is to facilitate construction of a new accessory building. The land is former Abitibi land, and the town would have to be the applicant to Crown Lands. The committee recommends this request be approved, and for staff to make the appropriate application to Crown Lands and sell as per the town's land sales policy once obtained. Two sixty-six Grenfell Heights Land. The committee reviewed further correspondence from the owner of two twenty-six Grenfell Heights on land that is currently for sale. The correspondence outlined the asking price and reasons for its value. This proposed area would be beneficial for future residential development. The committee recommends staff continue to negotiate a price for the property and bring back to the committee for consideration. Subdivision Agreement. The committee reviewed the latest proposed changes to the subdivision agreement document. The land version is, or sorry, the latest version is to be used for future subdivision developments. The committee also discussed the need to include provisions for multi-unit development within each new subdivision construction to assist with affordable housing. The committee recommends the document to reflect one in fifteen lots to be identified in each new development for multi-unit housing. The committee also recommends the other proposed changes be accepted. Rezoning Request Cromer Avenue. The committee reviewed a request to rezone the area of land on Cromer Avenue between Shannon Diddy Centennial Field and the Trans-Canada Highway from recreation open space to commercial highway. The request is to accommodate a multi-story building for future commercial space and apartment units. The committee agrees with this development in principle. However, there are concerns about traffic congestion on Cromer Avenue in this area. The committee recommends staff prepare solutions to address the concerns and bring back to a future committee meeting for discussion. Rezoning Request One Sixty-six Main Street. The committee reviewed a request to rezone One Sixty-six Main Street from commercial downtown to low and medium-density multi-unit residential, R. M. One, zone to allow for apartment units throughout the building. There are adequate parking spaces for this proposal. The committee recommends the rezoning be considered and for staff to start the rezoning process. Permit to Operate. The committee was advised of two permits to operate that the town recently received. The permits were for the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment facility. The plants are Class Four and Class Two, respectively. Both permits outline the requirements that must be met for operations, including properly-trained staff, maintenance requirements, and adequate testing to ensure regulations are met. The committee recommends staff ensure all necessary procedures and staff are in place as required by the permits. Multi-Year Capital Works Agreement Amendment. The committee reviewed the latest amendment to the multi-year capital works agreement that was previously requested by council. The request was approved by the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, and a resolution of council is required to accept the latest changes. The committee recommends this be approved, and a resolution be prepared for the next public council meeting. Rezoning Request for Residential Development. The committee discussed a previously reviewed rezoning request from a citizen interested in developing land fronting Queensway. The land in question is currently zoned commercial general and would need to be rezoned to either low and medium-density multi-unit residential or high-density multi-unit residential to allow for this quadplex-style residential development. Council has already expressed support for this rezoning request if an acceptable private-access road scenario could be presented to staff. The staff's earlier concern with plans presented were related to traffic safety and mixed-use conflicts within a commercial general zone. The mayor wishes to have this decision reviewed again without the requirement of a private road. The committee recommends that this decision be discussed again in the next committee meeting. The meeting adjourned at seven fifty P M., and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
It's been moved by Councillor Cody, seconded by Councillor Hiscock. Any discussion on the Public Works and Development Minutes? Councillor Cody.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of rezoning requests in our minutes this evening, and I just want to let the public know that when we get a rezoning request come in, there's a whole procedure that we have to go through. So if we say that, you know, when we minute these discussions and we move forward with step one, that's not necessarily to say that council is in favor of that rezoning request. It's just part of the process. For a lot of this, we need to proceed to step one to get the feedback from the community, the residences, the residents within those areas, just to do further investigation. So a lot of these rezoning requests, there has to be public consultation. There's a bunch of factors that need to come into play. So when we advertise on our Facebook page about rezoning requests, or you see it in our minutes, or you hear, you know, through the public, or you get a letter in your mailbox if you're in the vicinity of a proposed or a requested rezoning, rest assured that, you know, that's not the decision that council is going to go ahead and do this. It's just the first step in the process. So rest assured, you know, there is a process, and we are following that process. And when we do ask for feedback from the general public, as you will see in the notices, that you, you know, send a letter into council or into the engineering department by a certain deadline, we would like for you to do that because we do want all your feedback. We want to hear your concerns, your questions. We want to hear if you're in support of a proposal as well. So I would encourage you, if you have any feedback, regardless if you're in the direct vicinity of a proposed development, or you just have some questions or concerns or want to express support, to follow those notices and reach out as it is suggested in those minutes because council does meet and discuss and take into consideration all of the, all of the comments that do come into us. So again, it's a process. Step one doesn't mean it's approved. Step one just means we're going to go through the process to make sure that when we are ready to make a decision, that it is an informed decision. So just to clarify some of that for the public.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think it wasn't that long ago in a public meeting I went through the same explanation. It seems as over the years, this is, I don't know, I guess we're legislated to do certain things, as you said. And I guess, to add on to what you said, what happens is when a request comes in for rezoning, you know, council first looks at it and says, well, is there any merit to this at all? And what sort of changes are being asked for and other factors? And there will be some times where we may say right away, you know, that's never going to happen, we're not going to do that. So we would tell the person who's making the request that we're not in favor of that. If there's any chance at all that there may be rezoning, we would go ahead and put that rezoning request in, which has to go through government, which is legislated, and as Councillor Cody said, a public meeting is required as a part of that. So we'll go and we'll try to nail down the radius within the area that's being talked about and let the people in the immediate area know that this rezoning request has been put forward, and there's no decision made by council. And as you said, Councillor Cody, you know, there is a ways to go before anything happens, and it's funny, we see so many of these these days. It's because our town plan is, again, legislative requirement for all municipalities to have a town plan with a zoning map, and that is available on our website for anybody who would like to see that. And then anytime there's a change proposed for anywhere, we have to put that through government, and sometimes that's a time-consuming process. And I'll give you one example, I guess, in the last few years would be the Jim's Red and White Store, or I'm not sure what he calls his store there now on King Street. So the old Booth School was rezoned, and that went through the process as well. And, you know, there was a public meeting, and there will be again. And when it comes to, you know, some of the development that's been talked about here, you know, the Grenfell Heights land, for example, we talked about in the minutes there, and this is land that council is looking at for future development, and future could be ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. It's just that we have to make sure that there's land available for future growth, and when opportunities come up, sometimes we may take that into the town's inventory. And it doesn't mean that we're going to all of a sudden be building behind people's houses on Grenfell Heights. It means that in future, there may be a time when that would be valuable land and an opportunity to grow our community. And, okay, so that's comments on that part. Any other comments on Public Works and Development? And of course, we'll talk more about that, I think, because there's some things also related to rezoning in our committee And of course, we'll talk more about that, I think, because there's, uh, some, uh, things also related to rezoning in our committee, the whole, uh, minutes that'll be coming up. Okay, so if there's no further, uh, discussion on that, there's a couple of things I wanted to refer to. One is the multi-year capital works, so, you know, the multi-year capital works program is a program that's administered by government, the provincial government, and it usually runs on a three-year cycle, so you have a three-year, multi-year capital program that you're able then to understand how much funding that you're going to get as a municipality to be able to put against your, uh, capital projects, whether it be municipal infrastructure, paving, it could be, uh, facilities or, you know, a number of other things. And we have yet to find out from government, uh, what the municipalities are getting. The three-year, multi-year agreement expired the end of twenty twenty-two? I'm looking at Mr. Chapman, right? Okay, so twenty twenty-three. So, you know, we're waiting anxiously for that to, uh, to come through because every municipality based on its population has a different, uh, ratio that they would have to pay towards capital works, right? Ours is seventy, thirty. Some communities are ninety, ten, some are eighty, twenty. So that means that the government will put in seventy percent and the town has to put in thirty percent. So for a lot of the capital project, and there are many that needs to be done in the town, obviously, uh, we need that. And I'm talking about that because, as everybody knows, the budget was released, uh, this week, the provincial budget. And yeah, there was a lot of spending on healthcare, and I'm not going to get into that at this point, but there didn't seem to be a whole lot there for municipalities. And, you know, we're seeing more and more downloading out of municipalities from the provincial government to carry out work that, you know, we feel that the provincial government has a lot of responsibility in doing. So it's great to see lots of money in the budget, but we have to have funding for municipalities in order for us to continue to carry out the work that's necessary to keep up with your infrastructure. And, you know, whether that be, again, paving or water and sewer, and, you know, we could have, I'd say, a billion dollars and we'd be able to spend every cent, and that's where prioritizing comes in, but I'd just like to, you know, mention that it was a little disappointing to me that there wasn't a whole lot there for municipalities. And municipalities, of course, have to have, um, that funding in order to do that work. If not, the communities are going to be, uh, set back, and the province will end up having to come in at some point anyhow, so. We hope to hear about that soon, because the other thing that happens with multi-year capital program that has been a frustration in the past is that we are waiting on word, and we're waiting, and we're waiting, and we're waiting, and we say to government, you know, we need to know earlier, like in January, February, so that we can go through everything that needs to be done in order to get projects going. And I remember, you know, when I wasn't on council, and I know a lot of people still, uh, say it today, and so they should, because, you know, you don't know until you get into this situation, but you drive around town and you're doing a job, and it might be mid, late October, and you say, well, what the heck are they doing that now for? That should be done in the spring, and we're saying exactly. Unfortunately, once the multi-year capital funding comes out, province has a lot of control. Uh, we have to be going back and forth to Department of Municipal Affairs with plans and drawings and requests, and everything has to be, uh, rubber stamped, and sometimes that takes a long time, and unfortunately, if we're late hearing, then that means that the tender packages, uh, are yet to be put together. Then, once that's done and the tender process goes through and people bid on it and you award jobs, guess what? Summer is gone and you're into, uh, the fall before you can do some of this work, so. Uh, that's another thing that we should continue to urge government is to get that funding announcement out earlier in the year so that we can be a little more efficient and effective with that money. I thought that was worth, uh, mentioning as well. One more thing is the reference to the rezoning on Queensway, and it did say that it's going to go back to the committee meeting, which will be, uh, next week. When we were in our last, uh, public meeting, um, and that minute went through, of course, I was present as well, I was a little bit surprised, I guess, to see that there was a requirement for a access road to be put in by the developer, because it was my understanding, and I had left that committee meeting early. It was my understanding originally that we were okay with the development in that area as long as staff could work with this individual to make it work. And when I saw that it's a mandatory, uh, part of it is to have the, uh, road put in by the developer, I was, uh, taken back a bit. So I'm not going to get into too much detail because it is going to go back to the, uh, committee and to be discussed, uh, but I will say this, you know, people who are in this community recognize that one thing that's a big challenge these days is housing, and particularly housing for seniors. And we have, uh, seniors who are le- leaving our community and moving to other communities because they want to get out of their house and they can't find anywhere to live in their hometown. We've got people who want to move to this town because of all the great things that we do for programs and events that are, um, not coming because they can't find places to live. These sorts of developments have to go forward, they have to. And in addition, council really, uh, needs to talk more about making more land available for all sorts of developments and to encourage developers to put that sort of housing in place. And I know there's a zoning issue there, of course, and again, we'll talk more about that, but when you see people who've been living here their whole lives telling you that they have to move out of town because there's nowhere to live, and that's very concerning, and I know it's concerning for us all, um, and it's something that we really need to address. And of course, there's a lot of land in town that's owned privately, and that's, you know, normally it's the way it goes, is that private developer comes forward, they go through the process, and the municipality really has very little to do that process. Um, I hear people talking about, and I've been approached by people who said Clarontville are doing it out there. You know, that they got a couple of good, big developments out there and all kinds of housing, so. I asked staff to look into that and talk to the town of Clarontville, just to see what the municipality's role was in that, uh, and other municipalities as well, a similar size. And really, the municipality in Clarontville had no role in that. It's just so happens that there are developers there who went ahead and they got land and they built it for that purpose and got permitted, et cetera. And the town of Clarontville didn't do anything or support that other than to issue permits. But I think we need to start looking at, um, ways to work with developers and make things easier on them. And, you know, when we talk about a mandatory roadway off a stretch of road, that's a big cost to a developer. And when you look at, uh, the costs of everything these days, uh, building materials, building lots and everything, it, uh, quickly becomes not feasible for developers to, uh, do these developments, and they're business people. I mean, they got a bottom line there and they want to make sure that they're going to be seeing a return. Uh, so we need, we really need to consider working with the developers more and having a plan so that we can make these sorts of, uh, areas available, and not just seniors, you know, because there's, there's a couple of different categories, I guess, uh, one is what's referred to in the minutes there as affordable, affordable housing. So, you know, what is affordable housing? Because everybody may have a different interpretation of what it is. But we know there's a lot of funding out there now for affordable housing, and the federal government has a bunch of programs, and, you know, we have to make sure that they are available to our, uh, developers and that they know about them, and we can help them through that process. But also, there's, uh, again, the seniors who may not necessarily need the affordable housing. They just want a, you know, a one-level unit, uh, that they can get away from the property taxes and their, uh, upkeep of yards and their snow clearing and everything else that comes with maintaining maybe a bigger house. So, um, we'll talk more about that next time, but I thought it was, uh, important to, uh, to bring it up tonight because it is a huge issue facing this community, and we have to have places for people to live, and particularly in that, uh, group. So that's all I have. Again, I'll ask if there's any other discussion on, uh, public works. I'm sure we'll talk more about that next meeting. No? Okay, we got a mover and a seconder, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. All right, there is a resolution there, Counselor Cody, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution GFW twenty twenty-three dash three six two. Revised Schedule A Multi-Year Capital Works Program. Whereas the town of Grand Falls Windsor qualifies for funding under the Provincial Multi-Year Capital Works Program, whereas all projects and funding allocation under these agreements must be approved through the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. And whereas the town of Grand Falls Windsor has available funding remaining in the Multi-Year Capital Works Program and has to re-profile funding, therefore be it resolved, the town of Grand Falls Windsor agrees to enter into an agreement dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to reallocate funding under the Multi-Year Capital Works Program, and, uh, I move this resolution.
It has been moved by Counselor Cody, seconded by Counselor Noel, any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, next up is Corporate Services, and in Counselor Dwar's absence, I'll ask Counselor Hiscock to please read the first set. We do have two sets of Corporate Services minutes, so we'll go ahead and read the, uh, I guess what I call the main set or the longer set first, and then we'll, uh, have, uh, some maneuvers to do, I guess, to, to get some people who are, uh, in conflict on both the Corporate Services, or sorry, the, uh, yes, the Corporate Services and also Committee at the Hall when that comes up. Counselor Hiscock, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Corporate Services meeting, uh, five o'clock Thursday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Present, we're the chairperson, uh, Counselor Holly Dwar, members Counselor Amy Cody, Counselor Dave Noel, Mayor Barry Manuel, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Counselor Bob Hiscock, Counselor Andrew Little. Staff, we're Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, Pete Winter, Manager of Finance, Robin Haniford, Communications Officer, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, and Town Clerk. Labor report. The committee reviewed the labor costs as of week ten. Total labor was six hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred nine dollars. This was twenty-three thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars or three-point-six percent under budget. The committee is pleased with the early results of the labor budget and recommends the staff continue to monitor labor costs moving forward. Disbursement report. The committee reviewed the disbursement report in the amount of six hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and sixty-one cents, and recommends this to be presented at the next council meeting. Taxation receivable analysis report. The committee discussed, uh, collections and ways to improve. They discussed using social media to remind residents of tax deadlines and ways they can pay, as well using water shut-off notices and tax sales were also discussed as a means for collecting outstanding taxes from residents. The committee reviewed the taxation analysis for February twenty twenty-three. The report analyzes, uh, the receivable balances along with the amounts collected during the month. The total taxation receivable as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three was seventeen million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Uh, sixteen thousand, uh, sixteen million, four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred fifty-six dollars and seven cents, uh, receivable in twenty twenty-two. An increase of eight hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents or five-point-eleven percent from the previous year. Total amount of taxes collected in February twenty twenty-three was one million, one hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, residents and businesses are reminded that Friday, February, uh, March the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three is the deadline to pay your tax bills. To avoid interest, please ensure taxes are paid or a payment plan is set up. Deviant Alert launch. The communications officer provided an overview and demo of our new town notification software, Voyant Alert. The software is almost ready to launch and will be promoted to the public in the coming weeks. C-dash twenty Fire Department. The committee reviewed policy C-dash twenty Fire Department, uh, recognition awards years of service. The policy documents, uh, existing practices for recognition of the service of volunteer firefighters. The committee recommends approval of this policy. Utility Act. The director informed the committee of a loophole that utility companies have found within the Utility and Cable Television Companies Act, which allows them to under-report their gross revenue. The committee recommends the staff draft a letter to send to Provincial and Municipal Affairs and Municipalities NL to ask for this act to be changed so that utility companies are required to report all relevant revenue. Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, joined the meeting at six thirty PM. Equipment commitments. The Director of Public Works and Development submitted capital expenditures requests that will end up being purchased in twenty twenty-four. With the way the economy is now, in order to receive these items in twenty twenty-four, they must be ordered as soon as possible. The committee recommends starting to process for purchase the excavator and manager of development vehicle. The committee reviewed a request to purchase a new asphalt plant, a Baglia BA seventy thousand model from S and T Solutions for one hundred forty-five thousand, uh, dollars plus tax. The current asphalt plant broke down and is too costly to repair. These units normally take time to manufacture and deliver. However, the Director of Public Works and Development found one that is available to be delivered next week at a reasonable price. The committee recommends proceeding with the purchase of this, uh, considering the urgent purchase is required for operations. The meeting adjourned at six forty-five PM. I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Thank you, Counselor Hiscock. It's been moved by Counselor Hiscock, seconded by Counselor Little. Any discussion on the first set of Corporate Services minutes? Counselor Little?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, one thing I want to point out, uh, was the Voyant, uh, Alert App or Voyant Alert system we're going to be using. Mr. Robin Haniford gave us a presentation on that and it's very useful in a number of different ways. Most importantly is when you look back at the emergency situation we had last year, our forest fires. It was not always easy to get the information out to everyone very quickly, but this app will allow us to do that a little easier. And it also can be used for promoting of our other programs or, or whatever other options people want to sign up for with the, with the system. So it's, uh, it's not quite launched yet, but it will be launched soon, so people can keep an eye on our social media for that, right?
Yeah.
So I encourage people to keep an eye on social media for that because it will be a useful tool that we'll have here with the town.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, we talk all the time about how difficult it is to reach people sometimes, and, um, and we know sometimes when you talk about social media and that, not everybody is, is, uh, not on the Facebook, as they say, sometimes, and me neither very often. Uh, but I think just about everybody these days got a smartphone, and, uh, an app is something that's easy to be able to download, and what this Voyant Alert app does that is, uh, that's unique is it allows you to be able to, uh, uh, identify a certain area of town. So, you know, our app now, if you, if there was a water break on Valley Road, just for argument's sake, then we say there's a water break, but everybody in town gets that, and really, who cares if there's a water break on Valley Road if you live on King Street? Um, so this allows us to be able to take these issues if they arise and reach these particular sections, and, and it goes a lot deeper than that, there's a lot of capabilities with this program and, uh, communications. Person there, Robin, I know knows a lot more than I do about it, but, uh, it is a good way of communicating with the public, and we do encourage people to keep an eye out and consider downloading that app so that you can be informed, uh, of issues that could be of relevance to you. Okay, and you said there was a correction there, Mr. Goss?
Uh, commitments. It talks about the, in twenty twenty-four for the excavator and the manager of development vehicles. It should be excavator and municipal enforcement vehicle.
Right.
Staff couldn't pick up my writing, I guess, when I wrote that one.
No. All right, note it, and that will be corrected. Any other discussion on the public works? Counselor Cody?
I just wanted to comment on the, on the Voyant Alert system. Uh, you don't have to have the app, so, um, I just wanted to get that.
Good, I'm glad you did.
You can sign up for this, uh, so what we're going to be doing is going out to the public and asking the public to provide us with their information on how they would like to receive the notification, so. You can get it on your cell phone by a text message, you can get it as an email, you can get it to your home phone, same as like the, the, anyone with kids in school, uh, knows. Every time there's a snowstorm, I get an email, I get a phone call to my cell phone and a phone call to my house, so my kids wake up. You've noticed a snow day. But anyway, um, so there's. But anyway, so there's options that, different ways to get this notification. So if you don't use a cellphone or if you don't use social media, if there's an alert for your neighborhood, it can come to your home phone. So I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware of that because I don't want anybody to think that they'll be left out if they don't have the app. There are still many other ways that you can get that notification. And the information on Voyant Alert will start to come out after, when we're ready to launch it, through Facebook and our, all our social medias. But it'll also be information on any correspondence that comes out from the town through mail, whether it's your tax statements or, or anything like that. It'll all be there and on our website, too. So plenty of ways to get us your information and for us to get you the information that you need as well.
Thanks for that. Yeah, well, I was assuming it was an app, and I'm glad you corrected that. And it makes it even all the better to be able to allow more people to take advantage of it. Any other comments or discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Just as Councilor Hiscock noted in the minutes, March 31st is the deadline for taxes, and more importantly is the discount date for seniors in Grand Falls Windsor to get their discount for the taxes on March 31st as well. And for families on the income support program, there's an added discount for you guys. Just come in and see one of our staff, and they'll be only too happy to take care of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments on that particular set of minutes? No? Hearing none. We got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, before you get into the second set of minutes, Councilor Hiscock, the Deputy Mayor is going to excuse himself for this. And if you would, go ahead, sir, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Corporate Services meeting, 6:45 PM, Thursday, March 16, 2023. Present, Chairperson, Councilor Holly Dwyer, members, Councilor Dave Noel, Mayor Barry Manuel, Councilor Bob Hiscock, Councilor Andrew Little, staff, Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Pete Windsor, Manager of Finances, Robin Haniford, Communications Officer, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, Town Clerk. Grand Falls Golf Club. Deputy Mayor Brown was excused before this meeting due to perceived conflict of interest as he is the Executive Director of the Grand Falls Golf Course. The Director of Corporate Services presented the 2022 Grand Falls Golf Club Course financials in addition to a summary of financial information from 2012 to 2022. The Grand Falls Golf Club are requesting release of their 2023 operating grant in addition to support towards the future capital upgrades at the course. The committee recommends release of the grant and to obtain more information before any other assistance is provided regarding course upgrades. The meeting adjourned at 7:30 PM. I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay, it's moved by Councilor Hiscock, seconded by Councilor Noel. Any discussion on the second set of Corporate Services minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, if you don't mind, Councilor Little retrieving the Deputy Mayor. Okay, I thought there was going to be another separation, but Councilor Dwyer is not with us, so no need to ask her to leave. All right, we'll move on to.
We should still note, though, that she is absent during this meeting, in particular for the seven minutes as well.
Correct, yeah.
She'll be absent in the, in the beginning of the council meeting, but we should make a note just to make sure.
Yeah, okay, we can do that. All right, let's move into the Committee to Hall minutes. Deputy Mayor, if you would, the Committee to Hall minutes. First set, we'll say.
Committee to Hall met 5:00 PM, Thursday, March 21, 2023. Those in attendance were myself, his Chair, Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Bob Hiscock, Councilor Andrew Little, Councilor Dave Noel. Staff in attendance was Nelson Chapman, Director of Works, Public Works and Development, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, Todd Mercer, Director of Community Services, and Robin Haniford, our Communications Officer. Rezoning requests, One St. Catherine Street. The committee reviewed a request from the property owner at One St. Catherine Street. The proposed development requires rezoning of the old Millcrest School from public use, PU, to low and medium-density multi-unit residential, R M 1 zone. In addition, the proposal is to rezone the old gymnasium from public use, PU, to commercial general restricted, CGR. The notice was advertised in the local newspaper, town social media blitz, and as courtesy to the neighborhood, mailed to adjacent property owners. There were numerous submissions received objecting to the commercial rezoning. However, there was, there was support for the residential zoning request. Objections were concerns of noise, heavy traffic, tractor-trailer traffic, disruption of residential neighborhood, and fear of further commercial development in this area moving forward. The committee recommends staff remain to meeting with the owner at a future committee meeting to get better understanding of the proposed development. It is important all the information is gathered before deciding on the next stage of the process. The meeting adjourned at 5:15 PM, and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Brown, seconded by Councilor Little. Any discussion on the first set of Committee to Hall minutes? Deputy Mayor, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just a few comments with respect to the rezoning request. Obviously, we received many objections in forms of letters and phone calls, et cetera, to many of the councilors, I'm not sure. And I acknowledge the residents from that area of town, Birch Street, St. Catherine Street, and Lynn Avenue here this evening. So as the Mayor and Councilor Cody pointed out earlier, there's no decision to be made on this tonight. And we are waiting to, the proponent has asked for a meeting with council to discuss his plans, and after that, council will decide whether it's a good idea or not a good idea. But until we do meet, like I said, there is no decision to be made until we meet with the proponent ecosystems from Corner Brook.
Yeah, and of course, just to add on to that, as we alluded to earlier, there will be a public forum as well. And at which time, you know, we've had, again, some examples in the past, and I think of one a few years ago when there was a rezoning request for a property on Grand Falls Heights near the school to put in a, a long-term care facility. It never did go ahead, but at the time, we asked the residents who wanted to come out to discuss this to do so. And the proponent for that project was on hand at the actual meeting, which is what would be the case this time if indeed it does get to that stage. You know, to be honest, we have, as council, many, if not all, of the same concerns as the concerns that were raised in the, in the objections. And I know we've said over and over again, we certainly are not going to be moving forward with anything that's going to have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. But the fact is, we didn't have enough information yet to be able to get that. And that's why we're going to be meeting with the proponent, getting some more information on exactly what that would be. And we can push the process then forward to the next stage, which would be a public meeting, and at some point, it will come back to council once again for a decision. So, you know, I hope that's, that's clear because, again, you know, it's not our intention to approve anything without knowing exactly what is going to be involved and what exactly is going to be the impact on the neighborhood. And there are ways as well in rezoning that you can have conditions or parameters in place to ensure that, you know, the public interests are represented and protected going forward as well. So, you know, I don't think there's much to say on that. You know, those concerns that we had heard are ones that, again, I know I share, and I think everybody does. And we'll wait to hear what the proponent has to say and an explanation of what exactly the plan is, because to date, we haven't heard. Deputy Mayor?
And just to be clear, that after that meeting with proponent, council might decide that this project is not worthy of going in that neighborhood, and there wouldn't be any next stage. It would, it would end right there, right?
Right, yeah, which that could be the case at, at any point, for sure. Yep.
For any of these only issues.
Exactly. Any other discussion on that first set of minutes?
Hearing none. We got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. Deputy Mayor Brown, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. Committee to Hall met 5:15 PM, Tuesday, March 21, 2023. Those in attendance were myself, his Chair, Mayor Barry Manuel, Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Holly Dwyer, Councilor Bob Hiscock, Councilor Andrew Little, and Councilor Dave Noel. Staff in attendance, Nelson Chapman, our Director of Public Works and Development, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, Todd Mercer, Director of Community Services, and Robin Haniford, our Communications Officer. First order of business was the Youth Advisory Committee. The committee finalized the review of the terms of reference for the Youth Advisory Committee. The committee is pleased with the document and is excited to get the committee up and running. The committee recommends these terms of reference be approved and for staff to be sharing the message to gain interest in the Youth Advisory Committee in order to start at the beginning of the next school year in September, 2023. Irma, the committee discussed information received from Irma on projects and activities they are planning. The committee recommends staff set up a meeting between council and Irma to discuss their plans and to work together to achieve common goals. Gorge Park presentation. The committee received a presentation from CBCL Limited and their partners on the final design of Gorge Park for the future phases of development. These include more trails, lookouts, a suspension bridge, and a new building. The committee was pleased with the final plan and recommends staff add it to the list of future capital projects for discussion. The meeting adjourned at 7:30 PM, and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Brown, seconded by Councilor Little. Any discussion on the second set of Committee to Hall minutes? Councilor Noel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I was so pleased that the town is taking the initiative to have the Youth Advisory Committee. You know, working with youth down at the high school all the time, there's so many great young people in the town of Grand Falls Windsor who've got a lot of ideas for themselves, and I think that to bring them into the fold now would be an asset for the town going forward. And I look forward to hearing what they have to say to help us going forward in the, in the fall. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess, you know, we've been talking about this for some time, and like a lot of things, you know, it takes some time to get things off the ground, so certainly good to see. Because, you know, from a Youth Advisory Committee, not only are you allowing the youth to have their voices heard, sometimes I think, and this is a general statement, sometimes I think we underestimate our young people and the, the power of their minds and ideas that they may have and suggestions. So that's certainly a good thing, and also maybe it gets them a taste of the municipal politics or politics in general. We do know that particularly in this province, there's an issue around aging municipal councilors, and that you don't see a whole lot of young people. You know, we've got young fellow over there, young Councilor Little, but outside of that, you do not see a whole lot of young people, and maybe this is something that would trigger some interest from the young people who get involved, so stay tuned for that. Any other discussion? Councilor Cody?
On the Gorge Park presentation, if anybody sees town as a beneficiary for any big lotto wins, or we'd love to have some of that money. What a beautiful presentation. And if we could get the funding to be able to do these projects, it would certainly put us in a class all on our own. The cantilever lookout, the suspension bridge, the enhanced walking trails, the kiosk-style layout for flea market-type things, playground area, parking area, amphitheater, so many things. And just, I mean, the price tag is astronomical. It really is unbelievable. And I don't even want to say the numbers because I think it would just scare everybody so much. But, you know, the federal government and the provincial government would definitely have to come on board with these projects, and it would definitely have to be done in phases, which is how the plan is laid out anyway. But, you know, just so important to grow our town, for the development of our town, to make us not just a great place to live, but also a great place to visit as well. So we'll continue to look at that project, you know, find ways that we can make certain projects work and find funding for that and, and kind of work through it as, as we can. But, you know, with the addition of the zip line down there now, you know, just really open up and enhance our river and, and showcase exactly what we have here in Grand Falls Windsor. To be able to do these projects would certainly put us over the top there for sure. So hopefully, you know, we will find some funding opportunities.
Yep, well, we do have a plan, and, you know, I don't think anything surprises me anymore when it comes to the costs around, certainly around the municipal world. But with that said, I mean, it's an example, again, of people need to know that this is not something that's happening because I know I've heard people say, you know, that we're putting a suspension bridge across the river, and, and yeah, we hope to do that. And hopefully, it does come to fruition, but there's no guarantee at this point because those projects have to go in, of course, with all our other priorities that we have, and there's only so many dollars to go around. So to add on to Councilor Cody's point that, you know, you take it a bit at a time, and we'd have to prioritize in that area. But we have been focused on riverfront development for many years now. And Gorge Park Phase 1, of course, has been a big hit, and a lot of people use that on a daily basis. And of course, it's a, a launch area, and we're going to have a new kayak launch as well in that area. And with the zip lining and river rafting, and we got a beautiful river that's a salmon fishing attraction for people all over the world. And we want to make sure that Grand Falls Windsor has a lot to offer so that people are going to want to come to here. They're going to want to experience what we have here in Grand Falls Windsor and other places in the region and in the province as well. So no doubt, it does take a lot of investment, but you have to do it a little bit at a time. And I think the plan is, is fantastic, and there's no doubt that a suspension bridge across the Explette River would be something to behold. And I know the design is such, too, that it's not too adventurous so that we're not allowing most everybody to use it, like, once it is done. But it will be a while, so it's just a plan at this point, and you have to have those plans, and particularly when it comes to funding sources, because when funding becomes available sometimes, you know, the federal government through a COA or other programs, they may announce a program like that. And when you've got these shelf-ready projects that you can just, here you go, here's something that we can do right away, and sometimes you're in a rush to get the money out, well, we're in a position to be able to take that money very quickly if they want to give it to us. So, yeah, that's interesting. And I think the plan, well, at this point, is not online, but we will have some, obviously, public access to that, and people can take a look at it for themselves. And, you know, and I didn't even mention the Grand Falls House Foundation and their plans there, and, you know, the whole Abitibi property and the access, which we continue to, to fight for, and we will achieve that and have that as a destination, you know. So it's, it's a beautiful thing. We've got that amenity in the river that you can't build, and it's something that we're very fortunate, obviously, to have. We know there's a lot of concern around the salmon stocks and the long-term sustainability, as there should be. But, you know, we're confident that we can definitely benefit not only from the river, but from all these other things as well.
Okay, any other comments on the second set of Committee to Hall minutes? Hearing none. We've got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, next up, notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion? No notice of motion. We'll move on to other business. And I believe Deputy Mayor? You were first last time. Councilor Cody, you're up.
Thank you. Kiwanis Music Festival, so this is the first in-person Kiwanis Music Festival since 2019. And just to highlight some of the benefits to not just performers, but to people who get to enjoy them as well. Obviously, development, musical skills, self-confidence, and physical coordination, as well as it improves mental wellness, and as well, music brings people together and creates community. So, and if. together and creates community, so, and if you're watching any of it in person, or if you're like me and been following the highlights and pictures on Facebook from the Quanah's Facebook page, as well as all the parents highlighting the activities that are children and are performers, it certainly does create community, and it's just wonderful to see all the smiles and the costumes, and, you know, children you didn't even realize were involved in the arts community through music, just beautiful to watch, so it's happening now until March the 31st. It's showcasing local musicians in voice, guitar, choirs, piano, as well as other musical and artistic abilities. Over a thousand people are involved, and that's from the participants to teachers and volunteers, et cetera. Family and Friends Night is happening Wednesday, tomorrow night at 7:00 at the Gordon Pinson Center for the Arts. The admission is $10 at the door, so there's lots of wonderful local talent set up for that, and the highlights of the festival will happen on Friday, March 31st, at 7:00 PM at the Gordon Pinson Center for the Arts, and tickets for that show are $25, and you can get them at the Gordon Pinson Center for the Arts box office. So if you need more information, you can visit quanahsclubgfw.ca is their website, or you can visit the Quanah's Club Grand Falls Windsor Facebook page, so please try to get out and support all of the local talent that we have. I wanted to just talk a little bit about garbage collection violations. As you know, we've started our new garbage regulations at the beginning of 2023, 2022, goodness, 2022, time flies, and, you know, it was a rough start, we recognize that, and we started doing our enforcement, and, you know, it was, it was difficult at first. We received a lot of complaints from residents, they weren't understanding of the regulations, and our MEOs were issuing variants or warnings and tickets for people who weren't following the regulations, so through the jigs and the reels of it all, it seems to be mellowing out, and people are now understanding. So I just want to highlight, the week ending November the 5th of 2022, we had 144 collection violations for that week. The week ending March 25th of 2023, we had 10. So I just want to say thank you to the public for, you know, doing your part to make sure that you are following our rules and our regulations with regards to garbage collection. It's especially important this time of the year with spring coming. I noticed seagulls are back already, which seems like it's early to me, but I don't know, maybe it's not, but we all know how much they love to kind of get in and attack our garbage looking for food, rightfully so, they're hungry, you know, but it does tend to litter up the neighborhoods and things, so, you know, having these garbage regulations in place with the covered, covered containers and secured lids, you know, just really helps to maintain the beauty of our neighborhoods. So again, hats off to our residents, thank you very much for, for doing this, you know, that's a huge improvement, and we're certainly appreciative, and obviously, yes, we will continue to monitor, but if you do have questions, or, you know, if you're new to the area, you know, if you've got a new neighbor moving in who may not be aware of the regulations, you know, give them a tap under door or whatever, and just let them know, because that's not how we want to welcome people into the community with a violation for garbage collection, so again, just thanks very much and hats off to, to our residents. And the last thing for me this evening, I want to remind residents that 10-digit dialing starts this weekend, so if you haven't heard of that, we're probably one of the only provinces who do not have to dial 709 or our area code when we dial a local number. So back in the fall, I think it was when the CRTC introduced the 988 three-digit number, and that number, 988, now is the number for Canadians who are in need of immediate mental health crisis and suicide prevention intervention, so when that number was implemented, because of all of the algorithms and all the fun stuff that come along with that, it's now important and necessary for Newfoundlanders and Labradorians to have to dial the three-digit area code as well. So starting this weekend, if you dial 489, whatever, you'll get a recording reminding you that you must dial the area code as well, so I know, like a lot of cell phones and things, I think most of us already have the 709 already programmed, so it probably won't affect you in your cell phone, but if you're dialing from your home, or if you're just dialing a business in the community or your neighbor, and you're just dialing 489, your call, you'll get a reminder saying that the call to dial, redial with the 709, and after a while, it just won't go through if you dial 489 anyway, so that starts this weekend, so again, it's 10 digits now to dial a local number, not just for long distance. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Cody. Councillor Knoll?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. As Councillor Hiscock alluded to earlier there, coming up in June, we have our Poutine Fest, UTV ATV ride again, and I know sometimes our director and I may not see eye to eye on it, I would like to fill the stadium. It might be more of a headache for some of the staff, but I know that, just from the feedback from last year, from so many riders from around the province, had such a great time, and Mother Nature cooperated beautifully, you couldn't ask her a better day for a better ride, that sort of stuff, but June 2nd and 3rd, I believe, are the dates, so check our Facebook page, get your tickets early, and hopefully we will fill the stadium on that day again. But it just goes to show that, you know, with the Community Service Department, there's, seems like there's always something for everybody to do in Grand Falls Windsor, if you want to get out and enjoy our community within doors or outdoors, there's always something on the go, so, you know, keep checking our Facebook pages or social media, et cetera. The second one, I want to give a big thank you to Mr. Stan Singh and Tech Newfoundland, as well as the town of Grand Falls Windsor, for the Science, Technology, Education, and Math Symposium that's going to run with the high school and the intermediate school, and it's great to see that we have, you know, at least 40 students being involved in a day-long activity where they get to do their hands-on, this time it's on hacking, and we all seem to see the benefits or the need, the increasing need for that, seems like it's always in the nude, in the news, but, you know, just not everybody is an outdoors person, and I want to, you know, congratulate these people for doing what they do, and sometimes they just, they just blow me away down the school with the projects they come into, and they know full well that I'm not tech savvy, but they still come up to me and they show me, and I say, man, you know, what's going through this kid's brain when they come up with this stuff? It is absolutely wild, and like to walk through their brains sometimes, and you'll see what they're thinking, so hats off again to Stan, Tech Newfoundland, and the town for, for running that program again, this is not the first time. One other little item, I want to say thanks for the pothole repairs and for patience for the community. I see there's a Facebook post the other day, wrote that the town was alerted via some Facebook post, so I don't know whether or not this person had actually phoned and contacted anybody in Public Works or not, just let them know that just been making a Facebook post, the town is not alerted, you still have to phone in and get this pothole recognized and in need of repair, and another one in particular, there's a few other people that mentioned to me very adamantly about its need of being repaired on Tulat Drive. And lastly, for me, this time of year is ice safety, and this year Easter falls within the ice fishing season, I know myself, and lots of other Newfoundlanders and Labradorians will be out and about during that time, so cut your holes all the way to the ice and make sure that your day of fun is not, not sad by tragedy, so, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hiscock?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things here. The last few weeks since our last meeting has been very, very busy here at the town of Grand Falls Windsor. I just wanted to allude once more on the Special Olympics, just for the fact of the numbers of emails, text messages we got from coaches, family members of these athletes, the great time that they had in Grand Falls Windsor, and a big appreciation to the organizing committee, and also to our director, Mr. Todd Mercer and his staff, and also to our frontline staff, Mr. Rod Drake and his staff, for the great job they did on the fields. People know what the weather was like and conditions that weren't favorable at times, but these people just jumped in and just done everything that we put off all these events. So once more, I'd just love to brag about our employees and our directors of our town, absolutely fantastic job that they do, and they go above and beyond to make sure all these events go off excellently, and I thank them for that. Also, Mayor, coming up in the town of Grand Falls Windsor, April the 9th to the 15th, is the Provincial Drama Festival, and our very own North Cliff Drama Club on April the 10th will be presenting Self Help, and it's a play by Norm Foster, and it's directed by our very own Dave Anthony and Mary Kelly, so I know that's going to be just a fabulous, fabulous event, and I encourage people to phone the Gordon Pinson Center for the Arts box office and get the information for the times that these plays will be presented, and get their tickets, and it should be a great time, and I, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Hiscock. Councillor Little?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I want to get out there tonight is, Monday, this coming Monday, April 3rd, 6:30 at the Joe Burman Memorial Stadium, there will be a hockey game between our Grand Falls Windsor Fire Department and some teachers from the community, and they're raising money for the breakfast program, and Mr., and Councillor Knoll alluded to many times, our breakfast program feeds a lot of our kids who often come to school hungry, so it's great cause, so if people would like to come out and see some teachers and firefighters embarrass themselves, probably, it would be a great time to do it because you're supporting a really, really good cause, because kids can't learn when they're hungry. Thank you, Mayor.
Are you playing?
I am.
Don't go hurting anybody. We're hurting our firefighters, not lining them up on the blue line. Thank you, Councillor Little. Deputy Mayor Brown?
I was the fire department, I'd be keeping my head up, just in case. I've seen Councillor Little play hockey.
Hold on, to her a break.
Yes, that's for sure. Just one thing tonight for me, Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge a former resident of Grand Falls Windsor, Larry Barry, who is one of the stars of the hit show Son of a Cratch, that appears on CBC Television every Tuesday night, and good to see him doing really well for himself, and he's the principal in that show, and I'm sure that somewhere in his thoughts and minds is who's appearing to be the actor Gordon Pinson was his king as well, I would suspect, so congratulations, Larry. Everybody in Grand Falls Windsor is proud of you, buddy, and keep up the good work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, yeah, and of course, he was the mayor in the Grand Seduction as well, for those who, who watched that, which is most of us, I'm sure. All right, I got a few things there, some things that I was going to mention already got mentioned, you know, just with the garbage regulations, I know it's definitely good to see, I guess, not having to go around town every other day and witness garbage all over the streets, and that was an issue that, especially this time of year when the gulls and crows start getting at the garbage, and, and you see all those containers out and covers on, and the crows and the gulls are a lot smaller than they used to be, at least around here, anyway. Just want to let people know, we do have a meeting, the Health Coalition, with Minister Osborne tomorrow, that was our health minister, which was, we just learned about that today, I believe, wasn't it, or yesterday, maybe? We have been continually, you know, talking about the issues around healthcare within our community when it comes to the access to primary care and, you know, the future of our own hospital, et cetera, so we'll be bringing a lot of things once again to Minister Osborne's attention, and certainly making sure that we are not left behind in anything when it comes to healthcare and all these investments that were announced. Of course, we were one of the communities that are going to be the recipient of a family care team, they were calling them collaborative care teams, and now are family care teams, but basically, it's a new way of providing patient care to people, and I think it's a great idea, certainly more efficient, and it allows, you know, more access, and you're going to have maybe social workers and physiotherapists and physicians and pharmacists and everybody on a team who would care for a patient, but then they would be navigated appropriately so that, you know, maybe something that you could see your pharmacist for, you don't have to go to your family doctor, or something you could see your physiotherapist for, you don't have to be going to your family doctor, and so on, so it's, it's good, but we want to make sure that that gets implemented very soon, because we all know how serious the situation here particularly is in Grand Falls Windsor when it comes to access to primary care and the burnout that our healthcare professionals are experiencing, so we'll, we'll take all that to him again tomorrow. I will mention, for those that don't know, there is a Patient Connect portal that the province has, and for people who do not have family doctor, and we know there are a lot in this area that do not have a family doctor, and I know Minister Osborne was on not long ago, basically saying that the numbers didn't reflect the statistics they had in terms of the number of people without family doctors, but what I did learn was that the statistics he's referring to is how many people had registered themselves for Patient Connect for a family doctor, and I learned that 1.5% of those people are in this region, so the numbers that he's referring to are not reflective of what the reality is in this region, and we'll be bringing that to his attention again tomorrow, but for those that may not know, it is an opportunity to get your name on a list, to be able to get a family doctor at, at some point, because I would say there's close to 50% of people in the area without a family doctor right now, and that is certainly a crisis. The wind bids came in on March 23rd, for those who've been following that government process, very little information yet, other than we know that there was, I think, 18 or 19 bid proposals made, and we know of at least one, perhaps two, from proponents to develop a wind energy project, and it's more of a hydrogen production facility, I guess, in the Batwood area and in the central region, so we'll keep working with the proponents on that, and there'll be a lot of talk and consultation, et cetera, around that as well, but it is something that we feel is, is important to our future, and I think that we will see in some form in our province for sure. I know that Easter is coming up, and of course, Easter means Easter tournaments for Monarch Hockey Association, and I do know we're hosting some Easter tournaments, so check out the schedule on that and get out to be able to take in some good hockey action during the week of Easter holidays. What else did I have? I think that's pretty much it. The only thing I'll end with is, you know, again, I'll say how difficult it is sometimes for us to reach the residents with getting information out there, and, you know, to be able to keep people informed, because everybody gets their news from different, different places, and it is somewhat disjointed, but, you know, if anybody ever has any questions or you want more information on something, contact me, come see me, contact any member of council, the email addresses are on the website, and we can talk about anything and everything, and provide some clarity in some cases, and, and at least the information that's out there is, is full context and also, you know, factual, so I just wanted to put that invitation out there once again. With that, I don't have anything else. I assume everybody else is done, so I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councillor Little, seconded by Deputy Mayor Brown. All those in favor? Aye. Counter-reminded. Motion carried. We'll see you next time. We'll see you next time.